Seven o'clock, hold meeting order. Stand up for the pledge, please. Mary Jo will not be with us tonight due to an emergency. All right, can I get the approval of the minutes of September seventeen?
That's a move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Get a motion except payment of bills?
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Have some budget amendments, Steve?
Yes, I have one budget amendment tonight. It's budget amendment number two thousand thirteen dash zero zero five. It is to purchase two yard spreaders for the Department of Public Works for a total cost of ten thousand three hundred dollars. And that is the funded cap from the general fund, which is transferring five thousand one hundred and fifty dollars out of their snow and ice removal account into the capital account. One quarter from the water fund to transfer two thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars from their capital reserve account into equipment account and all to the same amount of sewer fund, two thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars from their capital reserve account into their equipment account.
Okay, do I have a motion except budget amendment two thousand thirteen dash double oh five?
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, we have a proclam- two proclamations, Louis?
The first proclamation I have is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'll read it into the record. A proclamation of the Mayor and Commissioners of Town of Elton proclaiming October two thousand twelve as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, sexes, economic status, and is spread over our vast nation affecting over twelve million Americans annually. And whereas men and women too often are murdered by their spouses or significant others, and children who experience violence in a home are oftentimes the targets of abuse and neglect. And whereas the cost of domestic violence can be measured in billions of dollars in medical expenses, law enforcement, and court costs, child operation, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity. And whereas Cecil County Domestic Violence Rape Center, Rape Crisis Center provided services to some four hundred and twenty victims of domestic violence between July one, two thousand eleven, and June thirty, two thousand twelve. Now therefore, be resolved, Mayor and Commissioners of Town of Elton hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand twelve as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And the Town of Elton encourages all of its citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence in our community.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the proclamation.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Did you like to say something?
No, just on behalf of the domestic violence and the victims that we serve and the staff that I have, I want to say thank you for recognizing that.
You're welcome.
Would you like to state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Parker Crawford. I'm the clinical director at the Domestic Violence Rape Crisis Center. Sorry. Mrs. My name is Denise McCraw, and I'm a director of Domestic Violence Rape Crisis for the branch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next proclamation we have is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. A proclamation of the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Elton proclaiming October two thousand twelve as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas annually, an estimated two hundred and thirty thousand women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer and thirty-nine thousand will die from this disease. And whereas breast cancer affects both women and men, although in the second and though it is the second most frequently diagnosed cancer in American women, thousands of men also be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer each year. Whereas each October, our nation and international community partner to heighten awareness of breast cancer to emphasize a life-saving message of early detection through outreach, education, screening programs. And whereas through research and advocacy, significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including an increase in five-year relative survival rate for localized breast cancer. Now therefore, the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Elton hereby proclaim the month of October two thousand twelve as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Elton, and encourage all citizens to work and support, to support research, and that one day it will lead to the elimination of this insidious disease. With this, where our hand seals can put to this proclamation, Mayor and Commissioners.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the proclamation.
That's a move.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We do have a certificate for you, for you involved, but we have one permission that's not here. As soon as we get her to sign it, we'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Okay? Okay, Ken? Oh, no, Ken, better. So I got two Kens here.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening.
I'd like to give you a report on the water system and the wastewater system for Town of Elton for the month of August and September. Let's start off telling you that the wastewater treatment facility in August performed excellent. The average BOD leading the plant was four point two milligram per liter. A spenosolus was two point three milligram per liter. The total nitrogen was two point five, and the phosphorus was zero point zero six. Those numbers are excellent. The, some of the highlights of the last two months, I'd like to briefly tell you about is at the wastewater treatment plant, we had to repair the drive chain on the dryer. And when we replaced the chain, we inspected the sprocket. And the dryer has two sprockets, one on the motor and one on the dryer itself. And we found that the sprockets were severely worn. And so we've investigated the, you know, the condition with Fenton, who supplied the town the dryer. Basically, what we wanted to know was, would it have been possible to have a double sprocket on the motor and a double sprocket on the dryer unit, okay? And then you'd have a double chain, and that would alleviate the vast loading on this sprocket. And we found out that the, Fenton makes three models, right? They make our model, and they make a smaller model, and they make a larger model. And the smaller model comes with a double sprocket on the top and a double sprocket on the bottom. And the larger model comes with a double sprocket on the top and a double sprocket on the bottom. But our model comes with a single sprocket on the top and a single sprocket on the bottom. And we believe that this is a serious mistake. So we've ordered the replacement sprockets to install. We should get them in about two months. What we've done to alleviate this problem is we've reduced the loading in the dryer itself. So we've reduced the tonnage per cycle. We, you know, when we, we've been loading it the way, when we started the system, Fenton came out and they trained us on the operation of the unit and Sterns Wheeler. So we, we've been following their guidelines ever since. But obviously, the loading, if it was a double sprocket, we would be fine. But the fact that it's only a single sprocket, if we don't reduce the loading going in, we're going to be replacing sprockets every five months, and it's not going to be cheap. So what we did in the meantime, we're operating the unit with a sprocket that's very, very worn. I mean, some of the teeth are actually, some of the tips of the teeth of the sprocket are actually broke off. So, and we've been replacing a chain a year. So we've replaced, as a matter of fact, when the unit went online before the town took over operations, they had, they had to replace the chain, the drive chain on the unit. So when we put the new chain on, we had to do something. So we, so what can we do? So we reduced the loading going into the dryer, we cut the weight in half. And it in fact cut the drying time in half. So we didn't really lose any time, but it, and when we did that, the dryer, it was like nothing. It just quieted right down. I mean, this is the way, to me, this is what we need to, this is how we should operate it in the future, is operate at half the loading on the unit.
Will that back you up then?
Well, it should because the drying time is actually half. So we were, we would average four hours a cycle to dry at full loading. And now at half loading, we're doing a little bit over two hours. So I think we're going to be fine. So that's what we're doing now, and it's, it's quiet now. It's unbelievable the difference. But it's, I think this is what we need to do.
But you still need a new one, or not?
Well, when we, we asked Fenton if we could put a double sprocket on this unit, and they said we could not. Because apparently, the way this was designed, there's not enough room to put a double sprocket on the top and on the bottom. Now why they did, why they designed it that way, I can't tell you. Like the smaller units got a double sprocket and the larger unit, it's just that happens that we, we didn't get that. So, but I mean, we'll be fine if we operate it at a little bit, little bit less weight. But I just wanted you to know that that's been happening at the plant.
Well, the question I have with that is, you checked with the engineer for that, with Fenton?
Fenton is, his company designed it.
Okay, and if they designed it to run one way, where does that warranty fall if you're running it another way? That's a question.
Well, I don't think the warranty is in effect any longer. I think the warranty expired after the first year. Now, they, they, like I'm saying, they, we were operating it the way we were trained at full loading. And the way that the system is designed, that all the, it has all set points. And it has, it has not, a set points that are based on the full loading of this, of this unit. So, so when you fill it up, you have a mechanical switch that says, I'm full. It shuts things off and turns things on, okay? So we're operating at half of that now. So we're, so instead of putting like, say, ten tons of material in it per run, we're putting five tons in there.
So what I'm thinking is, though, if this is, you consider this as a malfunction, not a malfunction, a wrong part put in, just by your observation, right? You think it's the wrong part?
I think it should have been designed with a double sprocket.
Look at this as if you're in the car industry, and you put the wrong part in a wrong car. Wouldn't that be considered as a recall or something? To bring that to the table, if that's the wrong part? I mean, that's the way I would look at that. You put a wrong part in the wrong vehicle, you're going to either have a recall or somebody's going to have to do something to fix it. You can't run a machine in a way that it's supposed to run full capacity if it's the wrong part, the wrong way. That's the point I'm making, Steve.
What about, like I said, what about other, other plants that have similar, because we looked at a plant that, we were hoping the same process here.
Yes.
Those other plants have the same setup with a double, or?
Well, that's an interesting point. The, we have a facility up in Lititz that just got a dryer, and they didn't get a Fenton dryer. And the reason they didn't get the Fenton dryer was because they felt that the drive system was inferior. And they ended up getting a, the dryer that they ended up getting is, was a, I can't think of the name. But I talked to Carl about it, and he told me that the reason that they didn't get this our unit up at, up in Lititz wastewater treatment plant was for that reason. Now, we contacted Sterns Wheeler. Now I haven't, I didn't, I think Louis may have talked to Thor, I mean, Calvin, but I don't know what his response is. But I'm just telling you what our, what we, what Fenton's response was to us, because we, the first thing we thought of when we saw this, when we inspected the sprocket, my first question was to my Jim, my maintenance man, my chief mechanic. I said, Jim, shouldn't this have a double sprocket on it? And he said, probably. So then he said, well, we, can we get one put on? Can we modify it? Can we put a double sprocket on it? And we need to find this out. So we contacted Fenton, we told them the problem. They said, you can't put a double sprocket on it because there's not enough room. That was the reasoning they gave us.
So they want you to run half capacity? See, that doesn't make sense.
No, they probably like made it run full capacity and wear out the sprocket every five years.
Well, wearing it might be more on it because you're running it at half capacity.
No, that, no. At half the capacity, you can't even hear it running out. It's unbelievable difference.
I would check into that.
See, well, we can find out about it, but that's not, that's not good if we're going to run only half of what we need to do. We need to run full, and we're only doing half. That's not good.
But it, but it cuts the time down so it's all out.
Yeah, it does.
Sort of like putting in your dryer, filling it completely full, it takes an hour to dry. If you fill it half full, you do it in a half hour. So you can do the same amount or the same period of time.
That's a good comparison. That's about, that's basically it. But I don't, I do whatever you want me to do. I'm telling them what Fenton has told us, you know, that's their response. If we can't put a double sprocket on it, then you're pretty much got what you got, I guess, at this point.
Okay.
But I really believe, or all that, or Commissioner Piner, that running it at a lesser capacity is going to extend the life of the sprocket and the chains. I do, I can pretty much guarantee you that. I wanted to tell you that Steve Williamson's been back, is back to work. He came back to work on September twenty-fourth. I think you guys knew that he'd been out, he had some cancer detected, and he had to take it out, and he's been, he's back on the job. We would have missed him, so he came back on the twenty-first of September.
Good, very good.
I put some pictures in to you so you could look at of the renovations in Well One. You should have them in your package.
I didn't get any.
No.
You didn't get them?
No.
All right, I'll get them.
Oh, she's, okay, we got it.
I just wanted to give you an idea of what the finished, you know, work that was done at Well One. Hopefully, we'll be able to do that at your new Well Two and the Well Four behind the agne. Also, I wanted to tell you that we, Chris Carstie from MBE was at a water, at the water treatment plant last week, where we had an inspection. It went very well, very well. The Blue Bowl Tower altitude valve has been repaired, and that's, that's a big thing because we've had problems with the altitude valve off and on since back in the spring. And we've had, had people come and look at it several times. We finally got it fixed. And it was causing some issues in the distribution system.
Okay, anybody have a question?
Yeah, before you go, I was at a football game about three weeks ago, and a guy told me how good you were in your position, so I wanted to let you know I'll leave that name. And add on to that, you also sent a reply in reference of a test well going to a public supply well. You did give us a reply to that, correct?
I did.
You want to expound on it a little bit more? It's always easy to read a statement on a piece of paper, but it's more informative when you're in person.
Okay.
So you want to add some, some light to what you were trying to explain?
Yeah, sure. I guess what I was saying to you is that you've just put in a new well, number two well, okay? Number two well replacing existing well two. And now you've replaced it, it's in the ground, and it's going to produce one hundred fifty to two hundred gallons a minute. The water's fantastic, the quality is excellent. I drank it, it's good water.
Thank you for drinking one out of your mouth. Go ahead.
But anyway, that's how I tested. But anyway, it has, did not have a bad taste or anything like that, which is important. And so you have that, and now you still have the original Well Four behind the agne that's been sitting there on the ground waiting to be put online. That needs to be brought up, you know, it needs, we need to put a pump in it, we need to put electricity to it, and we need to bring it online. And then we were hoping also to look at a well down at Elk Landing. And, and, you know, we believe that it's important that the town gets these backup wells. And we also believe that before you hire an engineering company like KCI or anyone else to come in and do a hydrogeological study on the maximum safe yield of the aquifer, you need to have all your wells done. Because empty, because if you don't, you'll do that study every time you put a, bring a well in. So you'll end up paying, you know, if you just wait and do the study when you've completed this work, then you do the study. And then, you know, then you can, then you can say, well, this is in fact the maximum safe field of our aquifer, because you'll be running Well Three, Well Two, Well One, the original Well Four, your new Well Four down on French Town Road, your well down at Elk Landing. And then you can, then you can, you prove, but beyond any shadow of doubt, what is the maximum safe field of the aquifer? Because really, no one knows that yet. But let me tell you something else. When MDE, when they come up with the amount of water, the capacity of your, of your system, they look at your surface water treatment plant, and then they look at your groundwater, your wells. When they looked at your surface water treatment plant, they said, well, what happens if there's a drought and Big Elk Creek runs dry? It's not a reliable source. It's what they call an interruptible source. We need to, Oakton needs to come up with a backup supply to that, okay? You've been through that. When MDE looks at your groundwater supply, they look at two things. They look at the safe, maximum safe field of the aquifer, but they also look at what happens if their maximum well becomes out of service. So when they come up with your capacity, they look at your ability to produce water without your maximum well online. So the point is, is that when you have backup wells, it takes away that, that, losing that back, that large well. Because now you have wells that will take the place of that well if it, if something happens. Because remember four years ago on Fourth of July when we lost Well Three? It was bad. Now, just think if we were to go through that again, instead of running two thousand foot of fire hose from fire hydrant to fire hydrant to keep water in, in the reservoir, we just turn on our wells. We're good to go. So the point there is that, you know, when you put in backup wells, you're backing up your other wells. But not only that, if you can demonstrate the, if you don't use them day to day and you back that water, you may find that you may be able to back enough water in the aquifer that if something were to happen to your surface water plant, you just turn on these wells and you pump water for, who knows, maybe thirty days, maybe sixty days, maybe ninety-nine days, which is what, you know? So it's, it's always going to be a good thing. So I think to hire, to bring KCI or some other engineer or someone in to do a study now is really kind of jumping the gun.
Right.
Point's on taking, with you shake the knowledge.
Anything else?
Are you just paying attention, right, Louis?
Yes, I'll cancel on, I've engaged KCI to meet the permitting criteria that MDE sent me, but given that the board's authorization, I'll cancel then, and, and.
Yeah, because I think we need to explore those other wells, because he's been right on so far.
Where to put the well at Elk Landing.
So we need to get those other wells going so we can, you know, like you said, combine everything, get everything done at once. That's good.
Thank you for your wonderful knowledge, Mr. Wilson.
Thanks, Ken, yeah, that's good. Thank you. Okay, Louis?
The first item I have is Public Works Agreement with Larson, Larson Southstream LLC. The Town of Elton executed a public works agreement with Remley Inc. on April fourth, two thousand eight, for the Southstream subdivision. This agreement was signed by Larson Southstream LLC under First Amendment, PWA, on October fourteenth, two thousand eight, which time Larson's Southstream LLC became the successor developer for the Southstream project, which includes fifty-six residential building lots. The PWA with Larson's expired on April fourth, two thousand eleven, and was not renewed. However, the town retained a letter of credit in the amount of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars to guarantee the completion of the public improvements. Southstream, Larson Southstream has since that time met with me and requests an extension for three years. Consequently, I would ask the board tonight to consider that three-year extension, as long as they maintain a letter of credit. We have confirmation from MTE Bank in Baltimore that they have renewed that letter of credit. There are sixteen building permits have been issued, and fourteen occupancies have issued to that project. So there's fourteen active homes out there in two families.
Doing pretty good.
So I would recommend that we give them at least three years on the PWA.
Okay, do I have a motion to extend the public works agreement for Larson Southside LLC?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Next item I have is EEOC consent agreement. The United States District Court for the Northern Division issued a consent decree based on an agreement between the town and the EEOC in the matter of Mr. Andrew Johnson. And the settlement hearing has been held, was held on September twenty-first, two thousand twelve. The case has been settled, the terms of which have been set for, set for consent decree and acceptable to the EEOC and to the town. Copy of the decree was, a copy of the decree was provided to the board. I would recommend that the board approve the EEOC consent decree at this time.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the EEOC consent decree?
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
That's all I have.
Okay. I don't have any on business, Earl.
Just, I know that the light's been taken down from High Street, but there were still concerns about the, the handicap parking. That was not addressed when all this was taken care of. And I know that one of my main concerns was the handicap parking that was eliminated, especially at the corner of North and High, right at the stop sign. Could you just address that? I have no clue what this is.
You can't put the parking there because it's blocked, it's like, you know, of course, the van is on the park, but you can't see. That's why it was changed. So it was a public lift. But you front of Dr. Dean, that's one space there, one there, other there. Can't, can't fit that out.
So I mean, it wasn't addressed, that's, that's the point I'm bringing up right now, but it just wasn't addressed, it was just dropped. But it just wasn't addressed, it was just dropped. So the state was here, they could have addressed that somehow. Or even, you can't push it back to move it down further or nothing like that. I know you can't park at the corner because of the stop sign. Just a question.
Sir Hardway, I'll send a message to him. They evaluated it, made the decision, and put the specs up to prevent that, to maintain a line of sight there. They did look at it, they asked him to look at it.
Okay. Where are we at with the recreation center? I mean, as far as we're in the process.
We're aware, we have a meeting on, off Blue Burger. And discuss it. Stand up to the board and they agreed to even discuss it, see what we want to go on it.
Some time ago, Commissioner Piler initially, and I guess we collectively talked about the jeopardizing the safety of pedestrians walking across the bridge on Delaware Avenue. Has there been any update on that, Louis?
No.
Well, you know, I thought about, you know, if you lived in Elkton for a long life and you walk and ride around, you see that when kids walk up Red Hill, they have the shoulder of the roads. When kids walk out to the Big Elk Mall, they got the bridge there that, you know, they're safe. I know Commissioner Hicks and myself had concerns with Elkton High School kids earlier. We had the state people there. People walk across Highland Road Matter, got the highways there, they got the light there. Of course, kids walking to school on the bridge, both North Street and Bridge Street, they got the sidewalk. But Delaware Avenue still is a spot that there has not been any concern about the safety. So while waiting for the state to do something, it is something that we can do as Public Works Department to put a footbridge or something across that people can walk across.
What really, since you're talking about, well, we had them.
We don't have the capability of doing that.
You can put a footbridge of big wood or a rod on or something across there. And I know you said, "We don't have the capability," but just listen to what I said. You've got all these spots in Elkton where pedestrians walk and they're safe. We've got one spot where it's not safe. So what are we as a town going to do to prevent something from happening? Real simple.
The easy answer to that is that with the board's authorization, I would ask our engineer to evaluate the possibility of building a bridge there, a pedestrian bridge, and bring a solution to the board. And that needs to have an engineer answer questions.
There's no way you can tap on the bridge or like put rock on or attach that there?
We've already been down that road several times, we can't attach to the bridge. Chief of Bridge, the Bridge Division said no. They don't have a solution right now. A footbridge may be a possibility. Two things, we can either wait for the state to see if they do it, or we can initiate the activity ourselves. Very expensive, we looked into that when Rob Walt was the mayor. Single span steel bridge, it was about a hundred and fifty thousand, as I recall, to do that, and the board elected him to do it. And we can revisit that if we want.
What happened to the design when we came out and we had a meeting? And they had a beautiful drawing as to what they were proposing, and then we just had to wait to get somebody on board or get this thing figured out and how they, they said they could do it.
Have the planner meet, when we had the meeting with the planner?
Yeah, all the guys, and they showed us a design that was workable, and they said they could do that, and they would get that done, work on it.
I don't know, I'll have to find out. The last information I had from their consultant, it was in their hands, but I never saw a design for a bridge there. I saw options, and one of the options was to go through the existing bridge at Eden Park. I don't think the board wanted to do that, so we kind of eliminated that one. And the other option is to build it closer to the bridge, not attached to the bridge, but close to it. But there are a number of the way the embankments are at that location, the way the stormwater drains from the thing complicates it to move the bridge, a footbridge over or down towards the center, towards, I guess, the west, in order to accommodate that. But an engineer would need to actually evaluate that, because you'd have to build headwalls and all that kind of stuff. I can't, I can't tell you.
Well, you need to get back with Terry or someone, because I, in fact, if I have my papers, I still had the design, and we had a meeting, and they said they would do it. Because I've been, there's many, I said, because we've been arguing the point about raising the bridge, and they wouldn't raise the bridge for us, so they came up and said, "Okay, the best thing we can do for you is put this walkway across here and we can build it." And they said they'd do it. Now, let's find out where they're at with it, because there's got to be someplace, I mean.
I'll contact them. I just, as the administrator of the town, I've not been given any information about a design for that location. You may have it, but I haven't.
Well, they had, they had it right with them that day, we had a meeting, a drawing, exactly what they were going to do.
I think it was a picture.
Well, it was a picture, but still, it's something they could do. I think they were going to get the money for the design.
The public down, I'll send an email tonight.
All right, thank you, Mayor, I'm done.
They don't have any new business either.
One thing about new business, I'm going to bring it up again. You know, why is South Street sitting there with no cars parked on it? I said that at the last meeting, called Louis before. Since I have more time to travel around the street, there's always one car there, and you got all these meters, nobody parking there. But everybody parks from South Street on down towards the Methodist Church, because they don't have to pay any money. So we've got all these meters that sit there, still not earning anything. I mean, it can sit there, it's no big deal, but it's strange if you're trying to make your town friendly. Evidently, we must be enemies because everybody parking on the other end. But I'll continue to pay the same thing maybe after the next two meetings. I'm done.
Okay, all right. Now, Kenny.
My name is Kenny Simmons, and I'm here to talk to you about something we've been talking about for a long time, Tendy Ridge. And I want to move on, I want to move on with the annexation. I think everybody's in favor of the resolution at one time, and it's got wayside during this whole process, a lot of misunderstandings, whatever. So I'm here just to make this real simple for everybody. I want to be annexed with Elkton Sewer, Elkton's Water, and that should be enough for you guys to vote and say the annex is. Because we've been through all the other stuff, negotiations, the talking, whatever. It's just, if I keep going in the path I'm going, it's taking way too long to get there. So I'll just, I'll call it roll over and say, let's just do it the way the town wants to do it.
So you are saying that you would go with the hookups and the hard water and the hard sewer?
Everything is the way somebody wants it. And I really appreciate, you know, typically, a lot of times we come here, everybody knows this project from upside down, around, or whatever. And I don't know, but I'd appreciate a vote if I could get it to either annex me or not annex me, so I can move on.
Well, we can probably make a decision and we'll let you know. But the other question I just have, with the economy and all those homes, do you think you would have any problems like you had up here on Red Hill Road selling them? Or you think we could, you know, I mean, building them and just renting them out is one thing, but actually getting some people to actually buy into them?
It's definitely going to be a problem. There's no doubt in my mind that as far as I'm concerned in the building business, the economy's got worse, not only better now. We hear in the national that things are picking up, but I need to see that, because I haven't seen it here. You know, we have tried to stay in business by building in Red Hill, and we've continued to build in Red Hill and basically support Elkton, you know, by keeping people working, you know, and all this. But this has got to come to an end somewhere, because we don't have an endless pit of money. So basically, what we need to do is, all I really want to do is, I want to get Tendy Ridge prepared for when the buyers come. In other words, start this process, come in here, be realistic, and get some cooperation from the town on the engineering approvals. And, you know, I'll guarantee we're going to do it right. But just move things along so that when the economy does move, you know, I'm ready to go and we're able to sell lots and basically bring roughly six million dollars to this town. Because that's what, four hundred times fifteen thousand is six million dollars. And that's, it's a lot of money, and it can get done. You know, as far as I'm concerned, I've wasted four or five years already. Everybody's wasted, you know, whether it was got started or not, I don't know. But back when I did start Red Hill thinking that, you know, I could get it moving and, you know, keep people working or whatever, and that hasn't worked the greatest. But it's okay, it's well under control, you know, I don't think you have any problems there. But it's well under control. And, you know, I just like to get this, I just like to make an agreement that says, "This is what I'll do," and you just follow up with what I always thought everybody wanted anyway, was to annex and, you know, pay taxes and do whatever. So that's what I'm asking tonight. We can round this up as quick as anybody wants to decide, and I can get moving. Any questions?
Do you have any questions? All right, just let us get together with it and discuss it, and then we'll.
Will it be tonight discussed?
No, not tonight. We'll get back with you and we'll have to consult with Louis and I might, we'll get this all and discuss it and see where we go, and then we'll let you know.
Okay.
All right.
I think you have something.
Just a procedure, Louis, I mean, I'm asking, because you're the administrator. He's requesting it, he's been in front of the board, I'm just wanting to know procedure. I mean, why would we have to come back if he's here?
You have to, in order for Tendy Ridge to be annexed, it has to, you have to adopt the annexation resolution. You already had the public hearing, but you have to adopt the annexation resolution at that point in time, it becomes effective in forty-five days. After the adoption.
So we can have that resolution then at the next meeting?
The resolution is prepared.
Can we make a motion?
The board has to, how they want to make a decision. It's already been prepared, advertised, the resolution is advertised in the paper four weeks.
Well, they're all asking, can we take action tonight?
Actually, you could, yeah.
You can?
I make a motion that we accept.
The resolution, I second about you.
I need to talk to Norman in private, so.
Hold it.
Will you do that? Me, Mr. Wilson?
Legal minds. It's just been told that's written. So have you got any more bites on Red Hill, I mean, are getting buyers all?
Right now, due to the economy, you know, it's not the greatest thing I've ever done, but I have moved Dr. Eisen in, you know, to build a few houses so I can keep things on. But I take my time, I'm the supervisor, I control the money. You know, it's still going to work and it'll be fine.
I can hear you.
But you can hear me. So, you know, I've made sure that, you know, that we're building the same product and making sure that, you know, everybody, all the releases and things are being taken care of and whatever.
Kenny, you still, you still own that, you still?
Yeah, I still own it, yeah, so.
What are you renting them for out there now, are they going?
Thirteen, thirteen fifty.
Thirteen, thirteen fifty?
No, thirteen, thirteen fifty. Thirteen hundred, thirteen fifty, combination, yeah. I'm just quick on the, because I'm used to it.
Are you going to go and buy one, get one?
I feel this meeting's out of order. I feel this meeting's out of order.
Why so, we're just waiting?
No, no, waiting, someone made a motion, someone said, and then all of a sudden, everyone disappeared out the back door. The meeting's out of order. You know, we're discussing, the lawyer said you can vote, and all of a sudden, it went out the door, and we're not hearing anything. I think the meeting's out of order.
We have to wait for legal advice.
Okay, ask the legal man, here he is.
Mayor, in respect to action tonight, could we take action yet? But I would rather see something from Kenny's attorney or Kenny in writing, standing forth asking that he'd like to have the annexation, that he wants to have our water and sewer. Because there's been so much problem and so many things brought out concerning United and everything else. I would like to have something written, and then we can take that maybe next meeting.
I would agree with that. Well, I'm sitting in front of you tonight saying I don't need an attorney to say that I want to be annexed with, I brought myself two years, four or five years ago, and I didn't have an attorney. I only brought an attorney in because I needed to annex, and I need some legal advice. I don't, I don't need any legal advice here. If you want something in writing for me tomorrow, that's perfect, I can do it and tell you exactly what all the public's heard here, I don't want to change anything. This is no, I'm not trying to fool, you know, I still, you know, not that it's going to bother any, I'm not trying to bother anybody, but I still have other things that I need to deal with here that's much more involved than what I'm saying now. So once I know that you take this resolution and we deal with it, then I'm on my steps to take care of my own problems, they're not yours, they're mine. So it's like I'm asking you right in the public to decide if it's a good idea or a bad idea. And all fairness, Norm, I'm not saying there's not a lot of stuff flying around, but I'm just take all that out of the picture, because it's not here anymore. I'll deal with my own problems, and nobody will come into this picture. I just need to have the board say, "I'm going to accept the resolution and whatever." And it's all I'm really asking, I'm not asking for it, you know. Lately, I haven't done anything wrong, so, or anything, you know. We had a deal that didn't work, and now I'm here just saying I revise all that, and let's just do this quickly and the way everybody wants it, the way it was set.
I don't disagree with that, but I think, I could be out of something right that could be filed with the town, and, you know, because there is other things brought in, because of your contract with United Water and what have you, this is something that I need to, that I can need to talk and some type of, maybe, yeah, you want to be identified, you want to be annexed, and you want water and sewer, but maybe I'll be some type of identity clause in that agreement. If United Water comes in there and takes this and sues you and sues them, because this, as I understand, annexation is a jump off, so.
Norm, I hear your legal advice, but as a representative for the town, or for the town, as a citizen, he has a right to ask us these questions and ask us whether we would accept this. We have no agreement with United, we've said this before, we have no agreement with Artesian. That is his deal, not the town of Elkton. If it came down to us waiting another year or two years, holding out, waiting to see what his decision is, the town would never be able to annex him in town. But I'm just saying, this is the way I look at it, legally or no legally, he has the right to request an annexation of his property. And when we say to him, wait until legal counsel from him, we're asking him to go and get a lawyer for something that he's asking for as a citizen on record. I'm just making my case here too, because we have no binding with United, with his.
My, my thing is, you know, uh, and I'm, I mean, I, I like the project, and, and I, I would rather see it in writing, you know, whether it has, does it have to come from, from an attorney? Can it come from, um, Mr. Simmons?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I would just rather see it in writing, so there's no discrepancies or, or anything like that down the road, uh, based on what's been happening, just by simple language differences throughout this process.
That's just my little piece here.
The language that he's going to have, if he presented up to new, how different is that right now if Louis said that it's ready to go? Or is it ready to go? I don't know. What did he have previously?
The annexation resolution has been advertised. You can't change it now unless you start over again.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I just wonder what was in the resolution then in writing specifically that's any different now, with him coming in there asking in person?
In other words, is the, the piece about United Water-
That's one that's in the resolution. The resolution is only to define meat and boundary, property being annexed, circumstances, the zoning, and that there's advertisements in the planning commission and the mayor commission, which they else, and things of that nature. It has something to do with the intimacies of, uh, water and sewer. I think that's part of a plan that we've already submitted to the county and also to the Maryland Department of Planning for separate documents.
All right, then they should be able to accept that resolution if it, we've advertised it, so the resolution itself can be voted on and accepted, but the other parts of it would have to be something else, as far as the water and the sewer and all that stuff, correct?
If you had three votes in favor of adopting the annexation resolution, then that would go into effect or start the forty-five day referendum period. At the end of that period, it would be effective.
But then all this other paperwork would come in?
The paperwork's already done.
Well, as far as like the change now to getting us giving him the water and the sewer, that would be-
That's no change. He was notified in writing, and the plan states that he will be given up to, I think, seventy-one, five, seventy-one thousand five hundred gallons a day off of, uh, Muddy Lane. That's already in the, in the plan, submitted to the county. There's no change.
Okay.
So everything's okay then, basically? So, all right, we got a motion.
We're going, we're going against our council?
Ken, would you mind waiting another fourteen days? I mean, you've waited this long. Would, would it matter?
Yeah.
And, and the reason why I say, because I'm going to vote to put this on hold, because I think right now the board, the council, and the town administrator, we're not on the same wavelength, and I think it needs to be done. I have no problem with it, but I, but personally, I just think maybe we need to look at ourselves and go ahead and, and make sure that we're on the same accord.
Right.
I think-
Mr. Gibbons, if, if you put it on hold, I, I will get a, a, a vote anyway, so, you know, I, I assume that-
I see nothing wrong with it, and I think others don't see nothing wrong with it, but what I'm saying right now, if you understand what I'm saying, for some unknown reason, the one, two, three, four, five, six of us a night are not on the same wavelength, so we should be.
Um, I only think, okay, I, I'll leave in very few seconds, but the only thing that I can say is that, uh, everything as far as annexation has been done. Louis just stated that is correct. I got a letter stating with Elton's Water. In other words, they sent that to the county, they sent that to the state. Now, it's already set up that that's the only way that I can annex. I was just discussing it in other ways. So what I'm trying to say is everything is done, except me getting to vote and waiting forty-five more days to, to start my process. And, you know, I'm not trying to do anything other than I decided today that it would be worth my while just to submit to whatever and just go on my merry way, and hopefully I've done everything that everybody wants me to do from the beginning to the end, and really, it is in front of you to, right now, to vote on the resolution, because everything that possibly could have been done is already done. So that's really all I'm saying. It's, it's, it doesn't, I don't think, fourteen days is a long time to me.
And I understand that's why I asked, and may I ask, Norman, is there anything voting? Is there any reason why we cannot vote on the resolution in your estimation as legal, counsel?
Uh, no, you can vote on it. You choose to vote on it, you can vote on it. Uh, we have come to a point, this is the first time that Kenny, Kenny Old Bevers, you know, you know, I've been friends a long time, but this is the first time he's come in and asked, said, "We're going to do your water and sewer." Everything else has been, it's been United, United, United.
Yeah, we understand that.
And I understand.
And that bothers me a little bit, because I know, and I've read his contract, that he, you know, he put himself in quite a spot. I know that United may not leave us out of that spot, but they may.
That has nothing to do with us. You as a councilman-
I'm saying, we don't have, we're not part of, or, we're not part of that contract. I understand that. So yes, you can vote on it if you choose to vote on it, yes. All you're doing is accepting his resolution, get into water and sewer later on for the, for the plants.
Well, I, I made a motion, and we were waiting. He was second, was waiting to vote on it because he wanted legal advice. Now, the legal vice stated that you're worried about the contract, that he doesn't have a contract with the town of Elton. He has a contract with somebody else. That's not our concern. So my vote still stands.
I second.
You second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Who's opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carried.
What did you vote on?
I voted, uh-
Three to one.
Three to one.
You didn't identify the, the annexation resolution by, by specifically. I think you don't need to.
All right.
That's the only thing, Earl.
Well, that's what I just said, I said, "Louis, what, what could we vote on?" And he said, "The resolution." I guess that wouldn't include those other things.
I'll move the first time to approve the annexation. Yes.
If we don't have the resolution, we're-
So we are voting on the resolution separately. That's it.
That's it?
Right.
That's all.
Yeah.
All right, that's unanimous then on the resolution, Louis.
I'll, I'll produce a document for your signature tonight.
Okay.
I really appreciate this. Uh, I think when we're all done here, we'll all be happy.
And even with that, that it's in writing, would that warrant a, a letter going to him stating that what occurred at the meeting tonight, or this is suffice for what we need for now?
Well, we'll have, we'll send a letter to him.
Okay.
Designate and, and, I won't even include counsel if that one, but I normally wouldn't include, I told you that the board approved the annexation resolution, identified the specific.
That's fine.
Now, while we're sitting here, I, I have no problem setting up tomorrow or the next day with Elton's Lou and, and Norm to resolve the other part of this, of this problem that they think there might be.
Okay.
Because I want to exclude anybody in here from dealing with anything. So that's, that's not an issue here. I'm not trying to drag anybody in. So if we need to meet and, and write something, whatever we have to do, I know what I'm saying, so we can do it.
All right.
Okay?
That's fair enough.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The pillows should feel good tonight. The pillows should feel good tonight when you-
Yeah, they will. I'll be able to sleep now. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, hearing nothing else, I wish you to clear-
May I ask one question? On this bridge, St. Dela Rive, have you photo that contact your state delegate, your state senator, see if they can help you with this thing? Has anybody done that?
Certainly can do that, like, I just-
Well, I think they represent this county and represent the town. I think that might be a, an avenue you haven't, haven't explored yet.
Okay. I can do that. I just got a letter from, an email from Doug Rudolph. I'll answer his email and send him back a question.
I mean, they're, they're toward to have bridges and replace bridges, particularly up at Leeds, and you don't have any, any sidewalk or anything on that bridge whatsoever. They extended it by two feet so you could walk across the bridge. You could already walk across it. That bridge has more traffic than what they did at Leeds on a daily basis. I mean, it doesn't make sense if you can't get something done from the, from the state and the delegates involved.
Very good. Okay, our motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried, we're adjourned.